Alright, officially welcome everyone here and I will call Dale Kusson. Business and history here. Kathy Kusson, school board. Roger Paul, super school board. Tim.
Good.
My gosh. Tim Smith. Tell us what you do now, Tim.
Chief academic.
Okay. Richard Stoll, state school board. Jeff Nelson, school board. Alan Green, school board. Larry Jackson, school board. Randall. Oh my gosh. Backley, school board. So we'll go ahead and get started. We'll begin with the pledge and mission statement. Mission statement up on our. Okay. So I'm kind of in the middle of even, but.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our mission statement is, our mission is to educate students for success and change. So we're going to begin with Richard discussing the results of the board survey that we took and then helping us set two or three goals that we can work on for the next year. He suggested that we keep it simple so that it'll be things that we'll actually work on. Alright, so Richard, turn it to you. And does he have a?
And I've got the lapel mic here, so yeah. Feels like I'm on the loud speaking system here, isn't it? Well, first of all, I would just like to say thanks to all of you for completing the survey. Appreciate you being here this evening. As I've talked with Kathy a couple of times, the goal tonight is for us to go through this evaluation instrument, the KPI as we call it, the key performance indicators, and then see what we can do on getting some goals and be done by 6 o'clock. Now, that's a pretty tall order to do that in 45 minutes, but we certainly are going to make a pretty good dent in that. And I think many of you have been involved with organizations that have worked on setting goals and putting together this kind of a process and as I have been involved with them. And sometimes that takes a couple of days that they will spend in doing that. But we have realized that board members don't have that kind of time to dedicate to this process. And so what we do is we're going to kind of go through this rather quickly. And the process we've used is to help facilitate all of that. So anyhow, we're going to see how well we do tonight. And Kathy, you're going to have to help me along with everybody else because your input is crucial to this process here. So first of all, let's just, and as you know, I sent all of you a PDF copy of that. May not have had a chance to review it, and if you did or you didn't, that's okay. And so I'm just going to walk you through just a little bit about it, but I'm going to start first of all. Now, got to go this direction, right here. Okay, so what the KPI will do and not do. Thank you very much. And by the way, Alan, I know you're responsible for getting the meal ordered up. That was very good tonight.
Our executive assistant.
Whoever it was picked out, that was great. So what will the KPI, what it will do and not do? First of all, the KPI is intended to start the conversation around building better boards. And I think most of you know the history behind this instrument. I think I reviewed that a little bit when we had our regional meeting here, and so I'm going to spare you that explanation. But that's what it's intended to do is just to start the conversation. This is not the end. The next point is, is there's no grade or score given by going through the evaluation. And the reason why is that the KPI, the third item now, gives the board the opportunity to compare your performance to your priorities. And so as you went through there, there may be some items and you go, you know what? Yeah, that's really not that important to us. These are the things that are important to us. So this is what it is, is to kind of compare that, align with that. And that's why you can't take the results of your evaluation and compare it to Logan. There's no comparison, there's no intent ever do anything like that because it's to compare your performance against what your priorities are. And those priorities can change from month to month and year to year, depending on what's, again, it's important to you. The last item, the KPI instrument is intended to further the conversation around improving the board's performance. So if you'll keep that in mind, that's what this is all about, is to improve your performance of what you're doing. So let's just jump into it. And the thing I'm going to do, I'm going to just kind of fast forward here to number eight first of all, to kind of just show you some of the things that we look at as we go over the KPI. So this one here, question number eight, "The board understands and advocates the public purpose of public education and the importance of an educated citizenry." And you can see in a bar graph there that most of you said, yeah, we do that always. Few of you said, oh, often. And so then this is the analytics of that. So there was actually five people who said always, and then there were four who said often. And there were nine of you in total who completed that, which is the seven board members plus Dale and the superintendent. So anyhow, so that's kind of how we look at that. Now, to me, that was pretty good. I'm using that as a good example and saying, you know what? Yeah, that's pretty good. If there's five of you who, you know, feel like that you're advocating that public purpose, I would say that that certainly is, not comparing you to another district, but as that question comes up, to me, that's probably, I'd say probably about the best that I've seen as an answer to that one. Now, that doesn't mean anything other than why I'm pointing it out. So the next one I'd like to go to, I'd like to go to, I'm just going to fast forward here again to number 17. "And the board regularly seeks input from employees in the decision-making process." Now, this was really interesting to me to see that all of you answered often in that. Nobody said always, and there wasn't anything less than that. All of you were totally united on that. So to me, that says, you know, something's really consistent that's happening in your district here with respect to getting input from employees. So however that is, all of you see that the same and must be doing it very consistently. Okay, let's go to number 19 now. "The board provides an opportunity for stakeholders such as staff, students, parents, community members to address the board." And so here again, you can see that there's eight people actually. If we go to the analytics, you can see there were eight people there. But eight of you said always, and then one person said often. You know, and that can be, you know, based on, you know, their interpretation of the question or what they see, you know, so that's totally expected for that kind of a response and that look by way of the graph there. But anyhow, to me, that was pretty interesting that you provide that. And I'm assuming that's probably at board meeting. Would that be, is that how all of you probably interpreted that as? Yeah, okay.
I interpret that to be at board meeting, but also when we have issues like board meeting, we go out, we take the presentation. It's just not the word. It's happening.
With them. Well, and obviously all of you are seeing that kind of thing together there, so very good. I'm just going to go to one more that I thought was really good, and this is down to number 30. "The board, through open dialogue, works to reach consensus on important matters." Now, you know, you may go, well, geez, we're not all together on that. No, I wouldn't expect you to be. But you can see that there were seven of you who said always, and then one of you often and one that said sometimes, that you work to reach consensus on important matters. To see that there, that tells me certainly there is a big majority of you who are saying, you know what? Yeah, we do through open dialogue, we're going to talk about issues, and then we're going to try and reach consensus on it. So, okay, I'm going to stop right there, and then I'm going to give all of you a copy of what I'm doing now. And so that's all of the good things that I see, and now I'm going to go to some things that I think maybe are worth talking about. So let's pass those around. There's a copy for you there too. And then we'll just walk through these. Again, this, I sent you an electronic copy of it, but it's kind of nice in this setting to just have a hard copy. I think that just really helps, and there should be one for superintendent and for Terry there, so. Okay, well, let's just go back to a couple of them. I'd like to go back to number 10. Well, this is a pretty cool clicker you've got right here because I can really, okay, so number 10. "The board formally and regularly communicates to stakeholders its strategic plan, desired culture, and improvement needs." Now, that one's interesting because look where everybody is. You guys are the full gamut there. So to me, that says, is that a bad thing? No, this is not a bad thing, but it's maybe one that you want to talk about of the strategic plan. And so we're going to get to that in just a few minutes there. Okay, let's go to number 25 now. "The board communicates to the public how policy decisions are consistent with the strategic plan and district goals." So there again, my guess is that, you know, there's some feeling that, hey, we need to do something more with the strategic plan. Got to have something together, and you can see where you're at. There's only one person who said always. Thanks Dale for doing that. No, I don't know who it was. As you know, this is anonymous process. He was just over there really concentrating, so I thought we ought to just jab him a little bit, so. Anyhow, so that's what that one looks like. And then number 26, same thing. "Board identifies and addresses priority needs based on data analysis." And so I thought, oh, okay, well, that tells us there then, there ought to be some work that we do on data analysis. There was two of you said always, and then there's one up there that says never. Now, we never do that. And again, you know, some of it can be perception, but anyhow, that's kind of what that picture looks like there. So the thing that we did, and you continue to look through that and make any notes, those are your copies there. So then the thing that I did is I sent an email around on Monday, and I asked you to send me one item that you wish the board would do. And I'll tell you what, I got some great ideas, and here's what the ideas were. So I'm assuming that you either had reviewed through this or they were items already that was on your mind. So the first one, the first three there are, I wish we could do more effective in building relationships with our legislators. And then next one, I would like our board to create a five-year strategic plan with the help of our district officials so we can set yearly goals. And I go, well, that's right in line here with what we just went through. And then number three, I wish the board would provide more information and updates on the ongoing building project that in our, that in our.
That are occurring in our district. Occurring should be.
Yeah. I let somebody else do that. I go, oh, that makes sense. Anyhow, okay, you got the idea though. So the thing I'm going to do, I'm going to put this over on the table here. We're going to come back to that in just a few minutes. Okay, and then got two more here. Actually, and I've got some more, but I had all of you but two had responded back with something you wished the board would do. And then systematically act on the items that the board, on the board evaluations that we decide we can, that we need to improve on throughout the year. And then you can see number five there, spend more time reviewing our district current policies. Now, that one I didn't see in the, that come out in the instrument, but anyhow, was a great idea. So you can see we have got some pretty darn good ideas here with something with policy and just a little bit different. So we'll set that one over here.
Can you send them south to show? Can you send them down to the north side?
Oh, okay, yeah, maybe that would be. Okay. Then I just got two more late last night, or they were really early, early this morning. Put those on there. "Understand best practices on using available data to identify priorities and address them appropriately." So that's the data thing. That was the number 20, what was that one, 25. And then, "Continue to develop stronger relationships with legislators, city leader from our districts." And so that one, I think, goes along with the one about legislators, but now they added, and so that's why I kept it separate here, had added city leaders into that as well. So there was seven, I thought, were pretty darn good goals that you guys sent. So the thing that I'd like to do now, I brought along with me here, just a blank one here. Are there any others? And so this is where you guys now need to jump in here. Are there any others that you think we ought to add to that list after you have kind of gone through those, what we've talked about here so far, or that has been on your mind? Is there something else that you feel like that we ought to add to this list here? And again, we're moving kind of quickly here, but I think in, for the sake of time, I think that we'll just kind of open that up now and say, hey, is there any other items that any of you, you know, that you can think of, that you wish that the board would do right now, that you see are some things that we could do to make this board even higher functioning and more effective in what you do?
I think we can do those. I think that's a pretty good assumption.
Okay. Okay. Any, and let's just go around the table. We'll just go around and see. Roger, anything that you can think of that you'd like to have added to that or?
I think, I think we do pretty good. We do need better relationship with the legislators and city people, just so they know what we're doing, know what they have in mind.
Okay. Kathy, anything else that comes to your mind that?
The only thing I can think of is in our vision statement, we say that we're going to have good relationships with the schools and, I don't remember exactly how it's stated, but with the teachers and all. And maybe, I think we do pretty well, and I think that the teachers and the administrators feel pretty comfortable coming to us with things, I assume, but that might be a thought.
Okay.
Keep that kind of on my mind, that we're there to support them, but I know that we want to help them because they can't do their jobs enough.
Okay. All right. Is that one, do you think we ought to write that one down at this point?
Do you think we ought to? Something we all, all of you know about?
Oh, I think, I would say the same thing. I think they need to know that they have, they have our ears.
Mm-hmm.
That we're willing to listen, and we're concerned, or we're honest with us. They always talk to us, and they always, I think they're willing to do that.
Okay.
They're willing to listen, that they know we're listening. We're going to have them.
Okay.
Feelings of, of what's, that sports feels something to it.
Oh, we do. There was a issue during the term, they threw one, seemed to seem like, yeah, that's about it, ducked down, it happened, maybe they attacked us.
Okay, well, this is just the first step here in the process, so, you know, we don't want to say, hey, you know, this is the end here, this is really just the beginning. So if you'd like, we can kind of keep that on hold, then we could bring that back if some of you feel stronger, maybe as you think about that one there. Okay. Dale, any thoughts that you have? Okay. Okay, all right, that sounds great.
No, I can't, I can't think of any of those seven or three. It's hard.
Okay, all right.
Likewise.
Okay. You're good. Jeff, and you're good, huh? Okay. Well, the thing that I would like to suggest that we would do then, since the superintendent is not here, this will be good, because we're going to give him an assignment.
He'll be here as soon as he's.
The thing that I would suggest that we would do is we would take those seven and we narrow that down to about three. And then, I think then that we would have the superintendent take those items and put them into the form of a goal, and then bring them back to you at your next board meeting. Or you could just send them out and let everybody kind of take a look at it, and then if there's some others that you think should be added to that, then you could have some further discussion around that. But I think, you know, that way this thing is, you know, certainly wide open, and then if there are people here from the press that, you know, would like to hear what's going on and some conversation around that, you know, you certainly ought to put that on board docs, make that available to the public, and, you know, hey, here's what we're thinking about. And then, you know, you may hear some ideas from employees of saying, hey, you know, this would be a great goal too, back to what Kathy was saying, or something along that line. And the other thing that I would suggest the superintendent would do, and I'll talk to Steve about that, is to have him take these that we narrowed down tonight and take him to his senior staff and say to them, okay, is there something we're missing here? Is there something else that ought to be added to that list? And then to kind of refine those goals down and bring them back to you. And then, you know, at some point, then I think, and you say, okay, I think we're okay with that, and either by consensus or whatever process that you would use, then you'd say, okay, let's go ahead and we'll, we'll say, these are our goals for this next year, that's what we're going to work on. And I've found if you keep that down to about three, then it's something that gets accomplished. It's kind of like shooting with a rifle instead of a shotgun. You know, if we have, you know, seven or 10 items, you know, the thing that happens is they just get lost and nobody can remember what they were. But I found if you keep it down to three, and maybe even if you narrow it to two, it's even better, and say, you know what? That's what we're really going to do. And if you have two things, I'll tell you what, usually they'll get accomplished in some form because everybody's going to go, hey, that's on our radar screen, and I know what those are.
I have a question then, because we clarified what a strategic plan is for me tonight. Will you tell me what you told me a strategic plan is?
Okay.
Because I, I think we need a strategic plan, but I wasn't sure what strategic plan was, and in your conversation or our conversation, I found out we're doing pretty good, actually.
Okay. You know, I think different organizations define a strategic plan in different ways of what it means. To me, the thing that I have found with school districts, and that is, years ago, school districts used to put together a strategic plan and it'd take six months to do it. And you know how big that document was? It was like a binder. And soon as it was done, got put on the shelf, and there was nothing, people were sick of it, and we, you know, they did not want to do any more with strategic plan and got tired of hearing about it. And so then, school districts have got really smart and go, you know what, we've got to narrow this thing down, like this, to where it's something, you know, that drives this organization. And so most districts now define a strategic plan as their mission, vision, values, and goals. Those four things.
So we have three already out of the four. So the last piece was they need to come up with our goals, and then they have our strategic plan.
And then I'd suggest, you know, obviously that goes on your website, then put it like in a tri-fold piece of paper that you can hand out as a brochure to people, so that it's just one piece of paper and it's a tri-fold and it looks like this, and there's our strategic plan. And you can hand that out, and I think you'd be amazed at how many people would go, oh, that's pretty cool. You know, and they open it up, and somebody says, what is your vision, or, you know, what's the mission of this district? There it is, right there. And I just make a lot of copies of that, have it available at board meetings, or if you use board members, you can distribute that. You know, this is what the work of the board is, this is what we're about. We've got it right here and what we're working on. And then, you know, and you put it in that format there, then next year, you know, you can come back and change it pretty easy and distribute it again. And I think so that the idea is to where that you're nimble and flexible and responsive to what the needs are, because next year it may be, you know, some other real priority that's out there, and then be able to make that change. But keeping it to three, I think is something you can go, you know what, we're going to get those done this year. That is what we're about. And, you know, and I've seen districts do all kinds of different things. I can tell you, I've been in a school district where that's put on the wall in the boardroom is all of those things. The mission, vision, values, and goals are all put around in the boardroom.
We also have a 30-second statement about Jeff.
I forgot to put that up.
That's okay, but it tells kind of what our business with the district line, our pretty, yeah, so we can put that in as well.
Yeah.
I do want to volunteer to do your brochure.
Oh, awesome. Okay.
Yeah, that's great, yeah. Well, I think you'd find that it would be pretty effective in helping you move forward. But again, so tonight, what I'd like to do then is for us, if we could, is to narrow that down to three, and then we'd have the superintendent meet with his senior staff and ask them, you know, is there something we're missing here? Maybe, you know, some of those might even be some of your employee groups or some of them and say, hey, this is what the board's thinking about. You know, is there something that they're missing here that ought to be added? And then have him bring that back to you as a board. And again, I think that falls under one of those items that we had up there of you getting input from your employees. And so I think this would be a, really a great opportunity, and I think he needs to stress to them, you know, we don't want 10 goals here. You know, this is something, you know, that the board, this is your board goals, that the board can get accomplished this year. So, okay, so now how are we going to do that? Well, let me show you, this is kind of a little idea that I've used. So I'm going to give each one of you three stickers. And I want you to go over there. Yeah, would you? Thank you very much. And I'd like you to take those three stickers and just go over there and stick them on your top three.
Can I just suggest one thing?
Yes, please do. Correct the spelling.
Number seven and number one together?
Together.
Oh. Okay. You know what, let's do then? Now, this is all participation. Go over there and, yeah, so we could do this, or we can do this, maybe put them right here by each other, and then you can.
Cross out the ones.
And go, see, oh, well, that was pretty easy, okay. All right. Okay, so if you'll just put your stickers on there. Did everybody get three? We got? Go ahead, please, please jump.
It's the board's goals, not my goals.
Well, and any input's helpful there.
If there's a tie, I'll break the tie.
Okay. Okay.
of our five-year strategic plan, and have that be, complete our strategic plan and put it into publication form to be handed out. Does anybody, anybody against that?
Well, they're not going to go against the president here.
Yeah, they would. They tell me they're not.
You know, number four is, I mean, it is a goal in itself, but again, it's kind of saying, we've got, I mean, it's kind of like, it's not a goal, it's kind of like a given. That's...
Yep, that's what you're going to do.
...about these other ones we're going to focus on and how they achieve those.
Do we need to talk about the official... Because you kind of got it. Is that just...
Maybe just like you said, the input of hang on now, okay?
I suspected this is what was going to happen tonight. I figured that Superintendent Terry was going to get tied up down there to the JLC meeting. And so, Terry actually came in my office, so I shared these with her already, so she has an idea of what we were going to do here tonight. So, is all we'll need to do. Jeff, can I give you three stickers that, when she comes, for her and for the superintendent?
Absolutely.
And then they could go ahead and, in fact, there they are right now.
Why didn't the next?
Hey, speeding is my favorite thing, and y'all just gave me a good reason to.
Terry, I was just telling him that I shared these with you earlier today, and so, it's where we're at. We're actually going around now and putting a sticker, and so you get three stickers there, on those that would be, that you think are the three top goals that you would like to see accomplished.
And we crossed out number one, because it's the same as...
The same as, yeah, same as seven. You feel like everybody's watching you?
Well, I feel like six, maybe five or two.
Nope.
Because...
Yep. Okay. Well, that was pretty easy, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, I think we could, still got some stickers there for the superintendent. We can let him put his on there, but I don't think that's going to change much there with that. Yeah, that's pretty interesting. Okay. Well, then I would say, the thing that we do then is just proceed from there unless any of you have got any other suggestions or ideas of how we would move these goals forward.
Are you going to talk to Steve then, or do I need to follow through with him?
You know, it might be best, maybe, if you talk to him. I can give him the assignment, though, if you'd like.
Okay. All right. Will you leave those there? And then watch...
Yes, yes, and we've got the stickers for him to put his on there as well.
Tim is here.
The lead resident?
Yeah, he can kind of help.
I can announce.
Okay, okay. On what to do, whatever. Yeah, basically, we've got, finish our strategic plan and spend more time on policies and what's the other one? Legislators? And...
Legislature.
Yeah, depending on how he votes, then I would say, you know, this becomes the number one, based on the marks.
Right. Create a metric.
Then this is number two, and that's number three. Do you add those up, Alan, correctly?
Number five, because if it's not measurable, it's hard to...
Right. It's specific measurable.
With number five, how many more have you got, like, going on? With number five, policies and judges, and what's happening there? Because that's...
Well, we've done several things. Number one, we went through and reorganized all your policies so they were organized more efficiently and effectively. Going back through and formatting them, trying to flag ones that are seriously out of date. We've been doing that for a long time before we updated them. And then, we're hoping that we can keep them current, very current for you, with an archived copy as well. So, my office is going to, we'll start sending agenda to these meetings, so that she can almost act as a board secretary, so that when we pass them, they get, we'll go back through the 12 policies or so that we pass this year. A lot of them haven't been posted yet, so we'll make sure those are posted and current.
Tim, are you saying, are you suggesting that, oh, at least what I see in my mind is, like, maybe there's a two-year period where the policies are not very good, where we go back to and see, you know, if they still apply, if they would be updated or whatever.
Which I think would be great, to have a more systematic approach.
Yeah, I think so, too. For the first time, we'll actually have someone who has responsibility to keep an eye and to look at them. That's great. We'll have a process in place.
Well, the other thing we could do, too, is, from the Public Information Office perspective, is, you know, there's a lot of laws that get passed, and we do legislation every year. And others, even sexual hours changed in the law, for example. That makes to make sure that we extend our policy to be current with what this, how the state law changed. So, I think just trying to keep you guys informed on those types of things is an important aspect, too, so you know where your policies may be out of sync with either board rule or the other side of the problem.
I think Jeff and Brandon and Terry, they have no idea what our policy book looks like.
Yeah.
It's like...
January 1st.
It's this thick.
You know, I'd like them to see it, just so they know what you guys are going to have to go through, because that policy book is terrible. You take it, days and days to go through it.
But with the interns, they really go through it, formatting, formatting, bringing those things up. That's, that's awesome. That's what it helps.
So, when, Larry, when you bring them to our meeting, then, will we read them at the meeting, or we should read them prior to the meeting, and then have our comments ready for the meeting? What would be...
Hopefully, you would read them prior.
Yeah, I like that one better, because when I'm at home at night, you can actually have a thought process and go through them and that as well.
That's more my style, too.
And have the first and second read.
Right. The first read is a content read. That's what we're really concerned with in the first read. And then, as we work through that and get it where we want it, then we start worrying about the actual punctuation, paragraphs, and fine tune that. The content's got to come through.
And we can do this anyway, in board docs, there's a process that we set up, and we can set the process up anywhere you want it, from a first read, a second read, legal review, you know, first discussion on your agenda to pass it, and then, in fact, we got it.
And some of you that have seen this, I've been working on, the council's one, and you can pass that around in the board docs as I may change the sort of things, green are additions, red are deletions, and then you can see what's left. And we can change that as many times as we need to. It's not until we actually tell it to say the actual changes that it will pull them out and add in. So, would you be nice enough to go over to some of the...
Kathy and Terry.
Oh, Kathy and Terry.
Oh, thank you so much.
To help me on that part. And Tim and Jenda.
Yeah.
Be a strong support there.
Janda does a lot of talk. Okay, so, just to kind of move this along, it sounds like we've got a good idea of what we want to do for our strategic plan, which is to create this brochure and goals in there, and our 32nd statement. With the policies, we will start to be more interactive with those in our board meetings, going over those. Then the third one is our legislator and city officials. And so, I know we can talk about this more a little bit later, but whoever wrote this goal, what kind of things did you have in mind that we should do that we're not doing right now, or any that's on the board, as to how could we accomplish that goal?
So, the only thing I struggle on this one, Kathy, is how do I have a metric that is going to quantify improvement in this area? I don't know how to measure that.
For the legislature. For the legislators.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a great goal, and I think that's something that we need to do, how do we create a measurable thing where we can identify improvement in progress?
Well, for me, if I talk to a legislature board, it's...
What we need to, once we set those goals, maybe we need to come up with some things like, for example, one of the things that I wanted to do tonight, after we're done with all the goal setting, if we can get to it, is to set up a legislative, legislator state in the schools where we can take them, perhaps, those of us who plan, to the schools to let them see what's going on. And I'm guessing many of them have been in the school for three years. And a lot of things have probably changed since then.
Yeah, and those are some great ideas. I can tell you, this would be one of the top goals probably in nearly every district, is that of working with legislators, because board members realize the importance of that relationship there and being able to influence them. And so, I guess, Jeff, to your question there, and that's really great, because I think that needs to be written in a way that I've heard a little earlier, and that is, these goals need to be something that is measurable and attainable. Those are the two qualifying factors to putting together this goal. It needs to be measurable and attainable. And so, the measurement part of that, let me just give you a couple of ideas about that, and I'm sure Terry can even collect some more for you if you'd like. But just as an example, in Davis School District, and they're a bigger district, but you guys are getting to be a pretty big district yourself. But in Davis, for example, they meet with their legislators every week down on the hill. And it's not just the board, but it's the Davis County elected officials that meet with all of the Davis County legislators. And they meet with them every week and talk about, you know, their issues and what they're concerned about. And I can tell you, and that's a high-level meeting, and those legislators don't miss it. So, anyhow, you know, that could be something that ties into the city leader thing, you know, and maybe you meet with, you know, get with the Logan people and you say, hey, let's put something, that's just one idea. Here's another idea. Last night down in southern Utah, then they have a traditional, and have for many, many years, that they have a summer steak fry with all of the legislators in southern Utah. And they meet it, one of the people that has a cabin up on Cedar Mountain, and all of the legislators come to that, and I can tell you, and they all come. And then all of the boards from down in the southern Utah area come and meet with them on that occasion. And so, that has been very effective. You know, so everybody's kind of found their thing. I think that many of you know about the Rural Caucus that meets on Friday afternoon, or Friday evening, that meets with the legislators. Let me tell you, legislators don't miss that either. They're there, and you folks could be a part of that, but, you know, and maybe that'll accomplish what you want. Or maybe there's something else, you know, that you guys come up with and go, you know, maybe, you know, we need to just have them up here, you know, for something like, have them come into your schools. Maybe you have something, a breakfast for them, and then you get them into the schools. Now, that's not easy.
We have a lunch once a year.
Do you? Okay. Well, and that's a great start, and so maybe you spring off of that and say, okay, now the thing we'd like to do is to have you come into the schools. So, that idea, to me, would be something maybe that would be measurable, but it ought to be included in there, is that, hey, we're going to have, you know, a day of legislators in our schools this next year, and so we're going to work towards that. Anyhow, it's just some ideas. You guys probably can come up with some ideas that would work better for you in your district here and getting with your legislators. But anyhow, just some thoughts, and like I said, we can collect some more, but, you know, everybody kind of does it something a little different of what works for them. But I think that would be something that would be measurable and attainable, something that you can...
Can we kind of wrap this up now, Richard?
Yep. I would just like to say thank you again, and I will talk with Superintendent Norton, and I'll let him know if that's agreeable with all of you, that I, let him know that's what we'd like him to do, is to take these three now, and then for him to put them in to kind of a goal statement, run them past his senior staff, and say, hey, what have we missed here? Is there something that we've missed? And then bring it back to you. And then, you know, and there's nothing that's binding on this, there's nothing, you know, and you guys may go, no, let's, we need to add another one and kick one of these out. So, there's nothing binding here that we've done tonight. This is just the start, and hopefully, it'll kind of move us forward anyhow of a beginning, and then you guys can take it from there and decide if there's some things that need to be tweaked, and there will be before you get it down. But again, I think that it's something with the whole strategic plan, is keep it simple. You know, don't spend months on trying to get that, those goals, just perfect. You won't. So, just go, okay, you know what? Yep, that's what we want. That says what we want to get done, and put it in that brochure, and away you go.
Thank you.
Anyhow, and it's two minutes to six, so...
Oh, good.
Yeah. So, thank you very much for your time and effort of what you did and your input in there. And so, I will just, I'm going to leave those here, and I can even leave these here if you would like. And that way, if there's any others, then they can be put on there and brought back to you.
Sounds great.
So...
Grab some more food, and she has a, she can send stuff to you.
Okay. All right. I will do that on the way out.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you again.
All right. Okay. We will go ahead and move on to number three, but let me just ask this question. Are those of you who have an MBA interested all in doing those goals?
Yes, if I could.
Roger, are you interested in doing that?
I'm sure...
And you are. Are there things that we need to do to...
Don't want to take that one with me.
Let's do it this way, so you can look at the MBA and see if there's anything that as a board we need to do that would help you get your next level that you're working on, and let us know at the next meeting. Let us know next month. Okay?
One thing we'll need to get, they'll cash out.
I was running with the festival for a few years.
Yeah, they had a, I think they put that up.
Yeah, I checked.
What do you think?
They were going to do that. I can have that.
So, does that exactly, they have to...
Yeah. I agree.
Correctly.
Yeah.
Richard, do you know when the open law test is going to be ready for us to take?
You know, we're updating that right now.
Okay.
And I don't think that there were any changes in this last year on an open meeting law. But we're just going to double check that, and I think we will make sure of those changes. And thank you. Good to have you. Richard, you could go on there and take them out if you want to. That's certainly a possibility.
Well, I tried.
That's a bad story.
Is that...
Yeah, okay. So that's what it is that you would... You could go back and take them again.
Oh.
Yes, you do. Yeah. So maybe that, maybe we got a committee that's actually going through your advice.
Can you do that?
But if your meeting law is still available for you, you're going to still... So you should just go back in and retake it.
Does that work? It's getting up.
I think I tried that and maybe it's...
Don't worry about that. I don't need to show this thing.
But I could do it. And I emailed...
Okay.
You want to have it chrome?
Uh, yeah, you get, okay, I'll go down here. I got it. Get down here. Got it.
Okay. And that would be for the new version of it. So if you're willing to wait for us to get that updated, you could. But if not, if you want to get it done, then you can go back in and retake it.
So we're all good really right now? That's not a big deal?
Yes, no problem.
Okay.
What you want to do?
I've got it plugged in. I've got it plugged in.
Well, thanks again, Don. Thanks for the dinner tonight. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's working. It's working.
Is that already have?
No, I've got a PowerPoint too. I'm going to show. Get that up here. Escape. Go right down here. Okay, okay. Go back here. Hit the slideshow, right?
It was, actually it was through...
Okay. Cool enough to find it working, I think.
So tomorrow I may be able to stay on and update it.
Get out of here. Exit. Escape. Go back down to...
While he's working on getting that up, ready to go, let's move on down for just a minute to the discussion of the board's schedule. I just handed you out a copy that was current two weeks ago, but I think that...
We're ready to go.
Is it the one that's still going right now?
Yes.
Too bad.
And I'll just tell you a couple of changes that we made. October the, oh, it's the same one. October the fifth, we need to change to the 12 because that's you, Yang. Are you ready to go, Dr. Redd?
Oh, go ahead. I'm, I'm, no, I'm all right. I'm fine.
Careful while you're here. You've had a long day. Okay. So I think everyone, I think everyone knows Dr. Redd and I didn't even get any kind of a...
I'm sorry, I didn't send a file.
Yeah, I didn't get a file. But we know you and we love you and appreciate what you do in the legislature. And he has passed a new bill, which maybe you have read. It is a concurrent resolution encouraging identification and support of traumatic childhood experiences survivors. Isn't that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And if I understand this correctly, and you can correct me, this bill is for organizations, agencies, schools to learn about this.
Yeah.
So we can train people who work with children on how to identify these children and give them help while they are young.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Anything to that?
Yeah, so I'm going to just, this is something I didn't know too much about until probably about three or four years ago. And I got invited to a half-day seminar on brain development and adverse childhood experiences and I really hadn't heard about it. But it rang so many bells in my brain about things I've observed as a physician, taking care of people throughout the years. And initially, I was just over, just totally amazed by the presentation and the ideas and the concepts of developing brains, how the brains are wired to adapt to situations and circumstances that kids are exposed to and raised in. And it never occurred to me that these events would have such long-lasting effects on people's lives until I started asking people questions as adults. Because I don't really take care of kids that often. Once in a while, I get to interact with children, but not very often. It's because I'm mostly internal medicine doc. But long story short, about eleven years ago or so, or almost twelve years now, Lloyd Berenson hired me at the Health Department. I left private practice and came to the Health Department. And about two or three years after that, he took some of my time and contracted me with Bereva Mental Health to work with psychiatrists. And I've never done real psychiatry. I've done a little bit of that as primary care physician, but not really in-depth like that. I worked at the jail and I worked at Bereva Mental Health. Dr. Cannon and Dr. Weber trained me on how to, you know, do psychiatry. I got to watch at their shoulders and kind of do a mentorship for four or five years. And they've, you know, Dr. Weber's since retired and passed on, actually. He died about a year or so ago. And Dr. Cannon's now retired. So myself at the Bereva Mental Health and Tunis practitioners are doing, providing psychiatry, you know, medical management for the people in our communities that are really, really ill with mental illness. And that's very...
So, Dr. Redd, your mission is to kind of educate as many people as possible to work with children?
Well, that, yeah, exactly. But it's important to understand why this is important, okay? Because the people you see in your schools, okay, that are having problems with behavioral issues or learning issues or sometimes with ADHD even, they get diagnosed ADHD. Some of them have ADHD and some of them have problems, but some of them have serious issues with childhood traumas. So I'm going to show just a brief five-minute clip and I'm going to show a little PowerPoint and you guys can ask questions, okay? Let's see if I can get this thing to run again. Okay, here we go. All right. Okay. So this is a, this is a five-minute summary of a one-hour documentary. It's really good though. Called Resilience.
What does your parents' divorce have to do with your risk for heart disease? If your mother had a drinking problem when you were growing up, are you more likely to suffer from depression as an adult? Here's what you should know about ACEs. ACEs stand for Adverse Childhood Experiences, extremely stressful events that can happen to a child growing up. Some experiences are so stressful that they can alter brain development as well as the immune system, increasing the risk of lifelong health and social problems in adulthood. The term comes from the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study, landmark research that shed new light on the root cause of everything from stroke and liver disease to substance abuse and mental illness. In the late 1990s, an epidemiologist from the Centers for Disease Control and a preventive medicine doctor at Kaiser Permanente set out to understand the association between childhood experience and lifelong health. They asked over seventeen thousand people in the Kaiser Health Plan in San Diego about their health history as well as difficult questions about their experiences growing up. Anda and Felitti tallied up ten different kinds of adversity in this largely middle-class and college-educated population. They were stunned to see how common ACEs were. Twenty-one percent of all respondents were sexually abused as children. Nineteen percent grew up with someone who suffered mental illness. Twenty-eight percent had been physically abused. And two out of three respondents had experienced at least one ACE. The researchers next looked at how someone's ACE score or the number of adversities they experienced related to a wide array of serious health and social problems. They saw that the more ACEs someone had, the greater their risk for poor outcomes compared with someone with no ACEs. Someone with an ACE score of four had twice the risk of heart disease and cancer. Someone with an ACE score of five had an eight times greater chance of being an alcoholic. And those with an ACE score of six or more, on average, died twenty years earlier. With every major problem they looked at in the ACE study, the risk went up for each additional adverse experience in childhood. As Dr. Robert Anda says, "What's predictable is preventable." It's important to remember that ACEs are not destiny. ACEs are a tool for understanding the health of a population as a whole. For individuals, an ACE score can be a tool for understanding their own risk for health and social problems and empower them to make changes for themselves and their children. ACEs tend to get passed down from generation to generation and are common across all income levels, races, and cultures. But increasingly, people of all different professions and backgrounds are coming together to discuss how ACEs affect their communities. They're finding new ways to treat and prevent ACEs. Many doctors are starting to screen their patients for ACEs as part of their medical history. More schools are becoming trauma-informed, considering the source of problem behavior when disciplining their students instead of immediately suspending or expelling them. To learn more about interrupting the cycle of adversity and improving health and well-being for the next generation, please visit kpjrfilms.co.
Okay. Now, I wanted to just get that as kind of a background. I'm going to just show you a brief PowerPoint presentation. You can actually ask me any questions you want. So this, this right here is a fiber optic model of a brain that's just kind of cool to me. But the important thing to remember is that from the time of birth, even before birth, neurons are growing and making new connections, little branches off these neurons going connect with other neurons in people's brains. And pathways that are reinforced by continued experiences get stuck in your brain to the point where that's kind of how your brain processes certain types of information. Right now, you're forming, right now, just listening to me talk, even though you're not a baby anymore, you're forming millions of synapses inside your brain right now, just experiencing this little board meeting thing you're having. Okay? So kids form new synaptic connections at a much faster rate than adults and older people do. But this is a process that happens all the time. Your brain burns twenty percent of your body's energy doing this. And it's important to understand that if a child is exposed to all sorts of different kinds of negative experiences or abuse or neglect or put downs or whatever, their brain gets wired to deal with that and they get into a situation where it's a fight-flight-or-freeze function. They're basically becoming wired for survival, not wired to come to school and learn how to read and learn how to write and learn how to do arithmetic and multiplication tables. So children that come from a background of chaos, a background where there's not nurturing adults in their lives, where there's no support or little support or lots of negative issues happen, fights between their mom and their dad or, you know, getting beat up or whatever's happening, sexual molestation, that sort of thing. Those kids come to school with both their arms tied behind their back. And that's something that as educators and as school board members, if you don't understand that, and I didn't understand it until about four years ago and I really understand the last couple of years because I've started asking my patients about this, you don't understand that, it's hard to, it's hard to understand why these kids are having problems and it's also hard to figure out how to help them. This is the study we talked about and a household dysfunction, cause of death. These are the two lead researchers in this group of seventeen thousand people. They were not, this didn't come from this poor end of town. This study was done on people just like northern, you know, northern Utah, okay? It was like middle-class educated folks. And yet, they had those high, those high instances. And these are, these are the questions. And rather than go over them, I'm going to give you a handout, but you guys already heard the ten questions. There's three of them regarding abuse, about being, you know, slapped, hit, sworn at, or put down or sexually, you know, sexually abused. Neglect, you know, feeling like nobody loved you or cared about you, thought you were important or special. You didn't have enough to eat, had dirty clothes. Then there's three, there's five household dysfunction questions about your parents being separated or divorced or your mother or stepmother being, you know, grabbed, slapped, or had something thrown at her or living with somebody who was a problem drinker, alcoholic, who used street drugs, household members with depression, severe depression, mental illness, or attempted suicide, and did the household member go to prison? Then you add up those numbers and that's your ACE score, okay? And let's see, a press button there, okay? So how common are they? Again, about only one out of three of us get through childhood with none and two out of three of us at least have one. And, you know, a lot of us, you know, one out of ten of us have four or more. The prevalence of the adverse childhood experiences, this is psychological abuse by parents, physical abuse by parents, twenty-eight percent, sexual abuse, twenty-two percent. These numbers have been done, repeated in Utah's population. It's not that much different from San Diego's, quite honestly. So you've got to remember that some of these kids are coming to school with problems where there's learning difficulties, behavioral problems, or whatever's going on in the classroom. You're being suspended, have to go to the principal's office, all that kind of stuff, getting in fights. Some of those kids are having serious problems in their home environment. This is, the ACE scores again result in different adverse outcomes. So if you ask adults if they've had two weeks of depressed mood within the last year, this is the correlation between an ACE score of zero versus an ACE score of four and the overall average. So we do have depression even though we don't have ACEs. But if you've got a bunch of ACEs, your chances of having depression are a lot higher. This is panic reactions, same kind of a pattern. Hallucinations. Who would guess? I have all these patients at Bereva Mental Health that don't have, I mean, they have hallucinations, they hear voices, they have problems with delusions, but they're not disorganized like some people with really severe schizophrenia are. And you go ask them about their childhood history. Oh, my gosh. You just can't, it makes you cry. I mean, I seriously break down and cry in my office, taking histories about this kind of stuff and finding out what has happened to these kids. And they're now adults and they have lifelong problems. It doesn't just go away because they turned eighteen. This is a really important slide because this kind of shows you the gray bars or how many people have ACE scores of zero going down to seven plus. You see about thirty-six percent have no ACE scores. About one percent of the population has seven-plus ACEs. But in that population of those, that one percent or two percent of kids, thirty-five percent of them have attempted suicide. And you look at the relative risk, that's a thirty-five times higher chance of trying to kill yourself related to ACE scores compared to people have an ACE score of zero. So people who have ACE scores of zero still get depressed sometimes and attempt to take their lives. But if you've got an adverse childhood experience and your brain's wired for fight, fight, or stress or problems and you've got an ACE score of seven, your chances of making it through life without having major troubles is a lot, it's a lot less. This is the same, this is the odds ratio of attempted suicide during childhood adolescent years. We have childhood and adolescent kids trying to take their lives in school. Here's one of the problems. It may not be the only problem, but here's a problem that is contributing to that epidemic of problems with kids having serious mental illness. If you've got ACE score of seven, your chances are fifty times greater of trying to take your life than if you have an ACE score of zero. Smoking. I mean, we've got these kids using substances on campus and smoking out behind the bushes and stuff like that. It's, again, kids who have ACE scores of zeros can still smoke and get addicted to nicotine, but the ACE score goes up and the smoking history goes up. My experience, asking people who smoke, why do you keep smoking? It costs six dollars a pack or whatever it costs. Why do you keep smoking? And what do you get out of it? It says, oh, man, it helps calm my brain down. Says, wow, what is that about? Why, you know, I always ask myself, what are these people experiencing that I'm not experiencing, you know? And they tell me, they don't get together and have a powwow before they come and talk to me, but I get the same story from multiple people that don't know each other. And so, some people who smoke cigarettes use the nicotine or the smoking thing to help calm their brains down. Same things with alcohol. A lot of people self-medicate this trauma, this agitation in their head, this problems with just agitation and anxiety. I always think of people with multiple ACEs as a deer out on the golf course waiting for somebody to, you know, to jump up and shoot them with a gun. You know, they're sitting there eating the grass and they're looking around. And I think people ACEs probably have a similar experience in their minds. They're always waiting for something horrible to happen, even if it's subconscious. Ever injected drugs? Same issue. Why do people self-medicate with drugs? And people are self-medicating some of this agitation, anxiety in their minds. Same thing with illicit drug use, you know, this is the year of initiation of drug... You know, this is the year of initiation of drug use. The ACE score goes up, the illicit drug use goes up. Teenage sexual behaviors. We're talking about intercourse by 15, teenage pregnancy, and teen paternity. The higher ACES you have, the more likely you are to participate in that kind of a problem, which causes all sorts of lifelong issues for people. This is ACE scores and risk of perpetrating domestic violence. Now, if you're wired for fight-flight-or-freeze, and you have this difficulty controlling your emotions, and being agitated, and flying off the handle, and getting angry, guess what's gonna happen when you get into a marriage relationship or an intimate partner relationship? You're gonna start doing the same thing there. You're gonna, you're basically trying to survive. I'm not giving people a pass for domestic violence. I'm just saying that part of the problem we see in the jails and the prisons and detention centers and places like that are related to this. It's not all ACES, but there's a whole bunch of ACES going on. ACE scores, this indicator's impaired work performance. And you could apply this to impaired school performance too, if you want to. And there's studies that show the same, the same pattern. I talk to my kids. Sometimes I take care of adolescents. I've got a bunch of adolescents I do take care of. And they're having all these problems with ACES. And I ask, and they find out, "What's your school attendance?" Well, they're staying home all the time. Well, why do they stay home all the time? Because they wanna play video games and watch television? No, because they're agitating their head and they're totally anxious. They're totally like freaking out. And they're trying, imagine, imagine trying to come to school. If your, if your parents, or you're, or you're, or they're throwing bottles and yelling and screaming at each other every night, or they're beating you up every night, how are you gonna come to school and learn? I mean, kids drop out of school. You ask, "Well, why are they dropping out of school? You know, why do they do this?" And one woman came in to me, she's about 35. And she told me that her, her mother, her dad, her stepdad sexually abused her and beat her up pretty much every day when she'd come home from school. And her mom always told her that she hated her and wished she'd never been born. Okay? Now, do you think she made it through high school and was, went on to become a successful adult? No, she's disabled. Her brain is so wired for this problem that she's now permanently disabled. She wasn't born that way, I don't think. But she's now disabled because of this problem. They're on this long-term disability because they can't, they just can't cope. Okay? Severe obesity's a problem. I mean, clearly obesity's not just about ACES, but I use to certainly contribute to it. Multiple somatic complaints. ACEs score versus odds ratio for chronic diseases, heart disease, cancer, stroke, chronic bronchitis, diabetes. And basically, when I, in medical practice, you see this all the time. But if you don't ask, if you don't ask the question, you'll never figure out really what's going on because most of us haven't been answering the question. Bottom line is, is, you know, adverse childhood experiences cause disrupted neurodevelopment, you know, synaptic connections that aren't very helpful for kids doing well in school but are great for survival in the situation where you're getting beat up all the time. And it causes social, emotional, cognitive impairment, adoption of high-risk, health-risk behaviors to try and cope with all this agitation in your brain, which results in disease, disabilities, social problems, and really death. And again, if you have an ACE score of six plus, your chances of living are shortened by 20 years compared to people who have an ACE score of zero. Basically, if your average life expectancy is 78, or whatever it is for the average human, your life expectancy with ACES of seven is about 58. And anyway, the cost of life expectancy is right here. The economic impacts are enormous when you talk about the effects on society, long-term disability, incarceration, criminal justice system. And I don't have a lot of data on this particular PowerPoint. But what they found is, is that the benefits of early intervention in early childhood and school-aged kids are much greater than the benefits of me trying to intervene in their lives when they're 25 years old, or working with them in the Cache County Jail when they're incarcerated for drug use and problems like that. And so the question is, well, what are the, what causes kids? Like, some people have ACES of seven and are state school board members. I know one. Okay? And there's people that are, that have been very successful in life despite having ACES of really high scores. How is it that some people develop resilience? Well, it turns out that somewhere along the line, they had one, at least one nurturing adult in their life. The person on the floor of the house that sat next to me when I presented this to the house on the floor, she leaned over and told me, she was a seven ACE person. She had seven ACES in her life. But she had foster parents that gave that stabilizing influence when she was four or five and was able to help her through life and make it. And so teachers, okay? Educators are also one of those stabilizing adult influences, whether it's a kindergarten teacher, or a first grader, or second grader, or third grader, or high school coach, or whatever it is. Council, school counselors, principals. I mean, people that interact with kids have a role to play here. And number one, learning how to be trauma-informed so they don't, so they don't just start throwing beer bottles at these kids. You know, I don't say literally, but sometimes that's what we do. Sometimes we take kids that already have a horrible traumatic childhood and horrible home life. We bring them to school, and we just reinforce their own negative self-concept and their stress-fight-or-freeze type of mentality. And so as educators, I don't know all the answers. I don't know exactly what to do. But I do know that becoming trauma-informed as educators is pretty important. And if we're gonna help solve this problem, we're not gonna fix it all at once. But if we make some, you know, if we help 25 or 30% of these kids turn out okay and be able to be functional adults, let me tell you, man, it makes a huge difference in society as in general and future generations. This is an intergenerational problem. If you have a parent with ACES that never got the help that he or she needed, guess what you're gonna have in that next generation? Another generation of kids with ACES. And so to try and break the cycle takes interventions on lots of, on lots of levels. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know if that was, Kathy, what you wanted me to do or not.
Yeah, I just thought it was good for us to hear the information and then ask you, what would be your suggestion for us as a school board to help with this more, because the classes are trained.
Yeah, actually, I agree. Okay, this is what I would do. I watched another documentary that shed some light on how schools interact. And it's a very graphic, hard-to-watch documentary, in my opinion. It's called Paper Tigers. And it's a one hour, one and a half hour thing on what Walla Walla, Washington did in their alternative high school to try and change the outcome of the trajectory of some of these kids' lives. And you can see it. Because these are not like actors that are hired. This is like on-the-spot. I don't know how they were able to do this and get away with filming. I have no idea, but they did it. And to me, that is a pretty helpful start. But I think, number one, understanding the discipline and how we discipline children, and how we reinforce their positive behaviors and try to ignore, if possible, their negative behaviors, and how we try and, and try and give them something that they can believe in themselves. And we recognize the problem, try to intervene. I don't think this is an issue of finger pointing. I never like to point fingers at parents who are struggling themselves because most of them had ACES too. I don't like to say, "Oh, you're a horrible parent." That is a wrong thing to do. But to identify problems and get families help when we can. School counselors have a big role to play in this situation, I think. But I think the bottom line is just trying to understand what the problem is, and then understanding what trauma-informed teaching and trauma-informed discipline is about.
So if we suggested to our district that they have some training for the counselors, is that training available?
I think we can, I can make it happen. Okay? I can help you make it happen anyway. But there's training in the state. There's people in the state down in Salt Lake that, they're already doing this. But I think the important thing is to, I would probably, I would start off with your counselors and your, you know, your administrators, your principals, and people that are involved in discipline initially. And then I'd probably try to get the teachers to learn about it too, quite honestly, if it were me, because the teachers are there every day with these kids. And the teachers can have a big influence. I'm just telling you, from my own personal experiences, being a kid in school, I had some fantastic teachers when I was in third grade that made a huge, well, third grade and fourth grade, that made a huge difference in the outcome of my life. And I don't think they realized what they were doing. I don't think they had any idea what was going on. But I tell you, they were just good human beings, you know? And I think all your teachers wanna help their kids. I think there's very few people that go into education for the money, right? It's in my experience. So I think that most people are in education because they, because they care about children. And I think if they have the tools or the understanding of what trauma-informed teaching is about and trauma-informed discipline's about, that they can become that, that stable, helpful influence in a child's life so they don't have to keep doing this intergenerational, generation after generation of just horrible outcomes. You got a question?
As a former teacher, you can see those kids that have all these ACE scores. And many times, the teacher is the only staple thing those kids see every day. And sometimes it's even hard to send them home because of what they're gonna get when they get home.
Well, and sometimes the kids are just looking forward to come to school because it's such a relief.
They love it because they know they're gonna get some attention, whether it's in a whole classroom, or whatever it might be. So it's amazing how many of them come from that kinda background.
Well, you look at the numbers, look at the statistics. I mean, those, those numbers are out of 17,000 people. It's not like it was just a 250 sample size. And they've repeated them across the country. And the numbers are all in the same, pretty much same ballpark. You're gonna have some areas where you're gonna have more intergenerational poverty, intergenerational abuse going on. But quite honestly, a lot of our kids coming to our schools right here in Cache Valley have the same kinds of problems. And they, and they really do have a hard time succeeding in school. It's not because they don't want to, it's not because they don't try. It's because their brains aren't wired to deal with that. Their brains are not wired to deal with our learning, you know, thing. They're wired to survive. And if you can get them to the point where they don't have to worry about surviving, there's no bullying going on in your classroom, or teasing going on in the classroom, where kids getting beat up, or being threatened to be beat up. And there's a safe place and nurturing, not a parent, but nurturing teacher figure that they can look up to and say, "Wow, this person cares about me." It really does make a difference. Yeah, good. You got a question?
No. Do you like the lecture? What do you get the impression?
You can get it online. I don't have a copy of that. I have a copy of Resilience. That DVD cost us $800 because, because we're allowed to show it in non-home situations. You know what I'm saying? And I gave that to Superintendent Norton. It's a one-hour documentary. In my mind, it's much more in-depth than anything I've presented to you here. And it gives you a lot of examples of what people are doing and how it affects people. The Paper Tigers thing, if I were an administrator in schools, or if I were a teacher in schools, or counselor, I'd wanna at least watch that and maybe start studying about what Walla Walla, Washington did to change their approach to dealing with, you know, kids that are having problems in schools.
I just want, I just want to think at your presentation down at Brown Place. There's one thing that either you or someone else mentioned that instead of, I mean, one suggestion for teachers and counselors, instead of saying, "Why are you acting like this?" Is to say, "What happened to you to make you..."
This is, let me, let me give you a typical example. I do this in my office all the time. In the jail too, I do it in the jail. And let me tell you, I break down tears in the jail too because you just can't believe some of the problems these kids have gone through, these adult kids. I ask them, "What happened?" Tell me about, I just, you have an open, tell me about your childhood. Now, when you're dealing with kids at school, it says, you know, instead of asking, "What's wrong with you? What happened to you?" And quite honestly, it's more, there's more to that than we can ever imagine, I think. I never had any idea what an effect these kinds of early childhood experiences have on kids' long-term outcomes. I had no clue until I started asking the question. And of course, I work at the Cache County Jail, and I see it. I mean, I ask my inmates all the time. They're coming in there, telling me about they're anxious, and they're withdrawing, or they have all these drug problems. And I ask them about their childhood, and they, and they look down the floor and say, "Oh, it was just awful."
And they don't wanna talk about it.
But they do.
Because it brings their emotions.
It brings their emotions out, but they actually do talk about it. And you just can't, I mean, it's pretty sad. So anyway.
One more question.
Yeah, sure.
Initial reaction that this gives me, I've always thought of classroom sizes as being an academic issue. This puts it in a whole new light, training teachers with the smaller class sizes.
Oh, yeah.
How much greater opportunity.
They can give you attention.
To actually do intervention.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, you know, whether you do that with smaller class sizes or have, I don't know what the model, what the best models are. I'm not, I'm not an education scientist, but you know, do you have, you know, I was over at some of the schools in Logan School District. And the model they had in some of their classrooms was, you know, teachers and teachers aides that were working with smaller groups of kids, that were working with smaller groups of kids, of four, five, or six kids at a time, kind of moving around through the classroom. And I thought that was interesting. I watched that for a couple hours one day. And I don't know what works best, and I don't know what you guys are doing, because that's not my area of expertise, but, but I think any way, any way that, that a child can look to a teacher and say, well, that teacher cares about me, or that teacher really is concerned about my well-being, that's really helpful. We always have to be really careful, right? We, you know, when you start asking kids about what's going on in their home life, sometimes that cause, that crosses boundaries, that causes all sorts of anxiety amongst your, your parents. So you have to sort of be a little bit careful and, and sensitive about those kinds of feelings and emotions, I think. But I tell you, that you don't necessarily have to know all the specifics. When we take ACE scores, we don't care whether the ACE was sexual abuse, or whether it was physical abuse, or whatever it was. We're more concerned about the number. We say, okay, you've had six or seven Aces, and this is where you're having problems. You don't need to focus on the problems. You say, this, this child needs a nurturing adult in their life, whether it's a mentor, whether it's a coach, or whether it's a 4-H Club adult leader, or a scout master, or a teacher, or whatever it is. That's, and, and the earlier, again, the, the studies they've done, the earlier traumas cause more troubles, and the earlier interventions cause better outcomes. So, the kids' brains are pretty plastic when they're like two or three years old. The older they get, and you guys know this very well, if they're not reading well by the time they're in third or fourth grade, they're going to have troubles for a long time. So, anyway.
You got a question? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, as far as getting, the, the, what would you like to do then? You want me to?
What do you think, Superintendent? Do you want to be honest in any direction? Or what?
I think mine should start from, uh, we had a video, we talked in the capture, so we'll just return the report and then we'll see.
Jane, Jane Chastain, what's that, yes? And she, you know, and asked a lot, the district has to, um, so, there has been some interest.
Yeah, I think, you know, I, I, yeah, actually, I, I'm trying to get, I'm going to have different people, because it's not like, oh, I want, there's two copies in the state that cost sixty-five dollars for, for the services. And so, eventually, I'm going to, we're trying to keep it up every three or four weeks, but if you guys want to get it back. If you want to do something for your teachers or your educators in the summertime, I can get it back up here for any system.
All right, we'll distribute you as contact first, yeah? Thank you so much, and we've got tons of the other, if you want to grab something to take with you, they've got boxes there too.
Let's go, why don't you go?
Uh, there's, there should be one already boxed up for you.
We, we just, we need some stuff, guys. Because there's issues out, these, the best of interventions. Just a second.
Um, board members, do you have any comments on this?
I would like to get to training teachers, because as a former teacher, I'm huge doubt that I have kids who are like, why, just the way they're starting. This makes a huge difference.
I don't think that, and I'm not trying to, I don't think this thing, it doesn't make any difference to a kid, why you're down.
No, it doesn't.
You didn't know why you were reaching out, and there's that, you, you, it has the same impact, you feel. So, uh, but yeah, any kind of information, there's, there's a model of, uh, as you were on class size, Ted Sizer is an education researcher. And at one point in his career, he said, we, we ought to be more of a school captain. And I was, that really, really kind of offended me, you know, I dealt more deeply into what he was saying. He said, you can't hire enough counselors. And I have the impact you need to have when the kids kind of enter your school system. He said, dude, the model's got to be that your teacher is a counselor. And the same kind of training that counselors receive, teachers receive, so they don't have to have a really good, good life, you know? And I'm like, that's a long, long time. You can't expect one person to ask three hundred kids, and they're just not ready to be able to know when and who you're interacting with. So, your eye asks a kid, I said, do you need a classroom? But this is, this is pretty good information, really, the question we are carrying forth. There's a couple of things that we are doing in our business, just so you know. The, the leader reprogram is directly, well, it is directly, it is directly involved in trying to give kids the self-esteem necessary to get their luck, and know how the leadership things, and, and that's the one the state's kind of wanting to, that's what they're, they're having. I don't think it's the best, or the things that they talked about here. There's another one called, uh, capturing students' hearts. And it comes out of, uh, Texas, it comes out of the Florida. Uh, and if you really get into the research, there's, there's probably no, nothing that you can put into a school that actually has more impact. And it's been documented, and that, but it's expensive. I've been trying to work in some of our schools, uh, for some time, and, uh, I guess that was again, in April. My goal was to get our three middle schools going, uh, with the flipper program. But April and May are not good times, trying to get any savings, so I'm kind of on hold. But I, I think we have done one time, money, that we could get that program into the, through our three middle schools, and, uh, it really, really does make a difference. So, this is something, we don't talk about all the time.
Just that, just even seeing the slides, as a classroom teacher. I, I don't know that we can, we're able to students, but it always gives us, it's, it's , yeah.
If you're on the faculty store, you, uh, add, add three kids, and that's it. I'll be, we'll tell you, that's making a difference.
Well, I think it's been more understanding towards them too, because when you have those children who are misbehaving in your class, after half a year, they are irritated.
Yeah, they are.
You know, and, but if you have this background knowledge of, there's a reason why they're acting this way. They have tempers, your emotions, natural.
So, you have these slides.
Anyway, important, I think that would be a good idea, to try and get it, get out of the rest of the point.
Yeah.
Okay, um, all right, moving along. Uh, okay, we were on the board's schedule, so, so let me hand it out to you. We looked at this, Carolyn and Dale and Steve and I, and there were a couple of things that we thought needed adjusting, and Carolyn just kind of set this up on first and third week. October fifth was one, because it's UVA, so we need to change that to the twelfth. And she'll get a finished coffee for us, but then you can start putting this in. So, you'll have it, and, um, can work around things around that. December seventh, um, we'll work, okay, I think, but what about December twenty-first? Do we want to have a one meeting, or maybe a Christmas?
Are you kidding?
Should we just do one meeting then in December? Or do you want to go back to a different time?
That's what I would say, just one meeting.
Everybody feel good about that? If, if we, we need one, we'll add one in. And then, um, let's see, March fifth is the conference, and also?
I mean, April.
April, yeah, thank you. Isn't that our NSBA? So, should we change that to the twelfth? We don't have the twelfth, we're nineteen. And then?
Where is the conference?
The session. Oh, yeah.
The problem is, will we, on general conference, will that?
Well, oh, probably. NSBA, yeah, probably. So, is that?
My, I've been for general session, but, uh, I don't trust.
Oh, and I skipped one, okay, so we'll change.
Actually, general conference will be on the first.
Okay, good, so?
It'll be the last of March.
I'll be on the thirty, thirty and first.
I think it'd be first, first and first.
I doubt it, I doubt.
I think that's what general conference is.
Could you contact us once and ask him about that?
Oh, yeah, this one, it was just, they can take care of that, try to replay.
Not me. Are they giving, I just give those my sins before the board.
So, what are you saying we should change it to? What are you saying, keep it to the twelfth, or?
On what?
On April, April twelve?
Oh, that's great. I was just talking about, I was just talking about NSBA.
Okay, oh, NSBA, well, that's going to be, um, general conference.
But Roger just said it's long.
Yeah.
Roger will guarantee that.
Okay, that will be perfect. Okay, then one other one I skipped was January eleventh, which is the USBA. Oh, okay, we already switched that one. January, that was day. And then, um, did I say October fifth is the twelfth? Oh, so let me explain that one. I should have reviewed this today, so I knew what I was doing there. I will be gone on the eleventh, but if you want to have it from the on, or I will be gone on the fifth, and I will be back for the twelfth. If you would still like to have it on the, yeah? That's great, we'll just have Roger come back that way. So, what do you want to do on that one? So, what changes, the twelfth or the eleventh?
The count, you run it on, so, I'm the best, we'll be missing.
Okay.
Three hours.
All right.
One of the things, the nice thing is the twelfth, still giving you a two-week break between that meeting and then following week, action, board meeting.
On the twentieth there.
It's harder to have them back to back, you know, when we get another, excuse me, it's two weeks, so Roger will.
Okay.
Okay.
You won't come on conduct, or is it on there?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, let's keep it off there, and Roger will conduct. All right, anybody else have anything they know that's going to be in a conflict right now, so we can talk about it, and try and get as close to the schedule as possible? Because it's hard when we change it after, when we're trying to fit the rest of our schedule in the month.
What do you want to do for the July twentieth?
Um.
I think to that, so, do you wish for?
Oh, July twentieth.
Yeah, what do we want to do for that meeting?
Um, I think that one we were going to cancel, right? And we were just going to do it on, no, that's the one we were going to have. Yeah, and that would also be our cookout, okay? Which we can have at my house, or at your house. Will the twentieth work for the cookout for everybody? Okay, put that down, and we'll work out the details on that.
Roger's spirit will be our treatment taxation carry.
I want your staff.
That'll be good.
Do you want to conduct that one too, Roger?
No, thanks. Oh, that's right, it's in these schools.
There will be people here supporting this one.
Yeah.
I'm sure. It will make a difference this year.
No, Dennis Chance will be here to protect.
Why don't we each make a list of who we think yourself? We'll see who gets the most.
Make eagle cards.
But I know there's some people who are working, working on this to make sure.
That's hard to pay it off?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's great.
They promised me they would have lots.
Okay. Okay, so this then will get to Carolyn, and she'll make up the new one, um, for us for the year. And then, moving right along to scheduling some events, uh, and I guess we can do this on here too. Should we have our Christmas party on December seventh? Carolyn, for this schedule? Everybody still good at that?
I'd see what the A is scheduled for.
Oh, okay, well, find out, you know, do you, do you find out still? It's not out yet.
Have to see.
Yeah, it might be partially, it's.
Do they have them on Thursday nights quite often, okay?
Preseasoned, it's all over the place.
Should we leave it at this for now?
Even, yeah.
Okay. All right, and then there's just one other thing that I, um, kind of mentioned before when we were talking with Richard about planning in October to have some kind of a legislator's day in the school, schools. Let's discuss that a little bit. What do you think about that idea?
So, the point was, uh, revolves from this relationship with legislators and city leaders, right? Jeff asked how do we quantify that?
I would agree with you.
Um, inviting them to, I, inviting them is a great idea, um, but their schedules are insane, especially, um, the closure is the end of the year. But really, you could quantify it by, by, um, because in my experience, if I don't have a personal relationship with that legislator, I can tell them whatever I want, and say, I'm your constituent, and they think, and whatever. If we really want to have some sort of, um, influence with them, we have to take the time individually to make connections with them individually, um, to go where they are, where they're having meetings, um, because they have meet, they're having meeting, intro meetings right now, all, um, all summer on the Capitol, um, on all different types of, um, topics. And if you're in one of those meetings, then you can, um, afterward, catch them to the hall, take their comments, whatever, introduce yourself. And the more, the more times that you interact with them, it's always like that, the more they start to recognize, oh, he's always here, or he's here a lot, or something like that. You know what I'm saying? It's like, it's, it's the same for us. Someone who walks in and says, I hate that you're doing this, or pay thanks, no. Someone who's here often, which doesn't count, but if someone was here often, we would pay more attention to what they were saying. Do you know what I'm saying? So that's how.
So, you could say, number of times invited to, uh, do this, or we measured on the number of people that we invited to attend, um, school visits, or talk about something?
Or you could quantify it individually by saying, once a month, I'm going to reach out to a legislator by, by going to this.
Emailing her.
By emailing, by, um, it's better if they can put a name and a face. I mean, it's hard to put a name and a face together with as many people as talk to them, but if they see your face a lot, and then you go to talk to them, you know, it's like on Saturday mornings at the county building. Then Senator Hilliard calls Kathy by name, you know, because he's seen her there often. Where somebody else who sits there, he may not know, because they don't, you know what I'm saying? To develop those relationships, I mean, it's great to invite them to come and see the school, and that's important, because I think they need to. But if you really want to develop relationships, you've got to be where they are.
So, could we kind, kind of combine a collection of these things with the idea, and maybe put a limit, or do you, Jeff, on how many of these we have to do this year in order to say, complete that goal? And it would include going to the Saturday morning things, which we do, we take turns going to that, maybe heading them to, um, if you can, the day on the hill, maybe with them. Um, I still really am pro, personally, for the legislators into the school. I think they, it's been a long time since they.
I think it's important for them to do that, to.
Well, I kind of want to show off, you know? I'm, I'm starting thinking, we're going to do some other great things, and there could miss a lot of money, but show them, you know, how we're using your money, because I think our history is turning very dark.
Well, if you want to do another thing like that, you could just support USBA State, District Day on the Hill, which we did not this past year, because it was the first time. But, you know, Cache legislators, there are lots of, there were lots of districts there, and Cache legislators walked out and went, so where's Cache? And I said, oh, we do it now. You know, while everyone else has all these robotics displays, and FMA displays, and wires, and all sorts of things, and, you know, a musical group starts playing there, and you could just watch all the legislators come out and stand on the, behind the top levels at the ratings, and, and watch those kids, you know? And the ones who are like, hey, those are my kids? It's important.
Well, I think it's a great goal for us to set, and I like that you brought us to task.
Well, that's how I operate, that's the only thing I know to do.
That we have to do something to complete the goal. Okay, so what's everybody else's feedback?
Well, and I like including the city leaders, because I've been working with our mayor on getting the speeds cut down in front of, uh, bridge line, and they're, they can carry a fair amount of power as far as being able to interact and get things done, and so I think the city leaders is a big part of what I'm, of what's.
Okay, so, should we, you, you've got it, it's on, well, I'm not here.
I can fill it, so I should have it across the plane.
Okay, so, and I didn't give it to you. It was Richard, and he, he had us choose the three goals up there that we wanted, and we each put our red dot on the three that were the best.
By the way, it's a lot.
Yeah, if you want to add.
You're supposed to put your.
And so, we, you can obviously see which three.
You can't outvote them, so.
Yeah.
You're going to have to vote.
And Tim's got all of the details on this, but he said to take these three goals back to the district people now, and put them kind of into a form that would work with you, and bring it to us for approval.
I'm trying to wordsmith it, considering your best, my comments.
Okay, so Tim knows what's going on.
So, does this, is this a survey?
Goals of district people would bring up. This was the survey you guys made.
No, I need for the district administrators to say, the survey they can wordsmith it.
No, the survey, your, your wordsmithing your goals.
And then?
Twenty-three.
Three, only three, yeah. One of those goals has to do with our strategic plan, which I didn't know what strategic plan it was, but we basically got it done, except for these three goals. Yeah, so we've got our mission statement, we've got our mission statement, we've got our, what do you have, code of ethics?
Values.
Values.
Well, vision, vision, values, and goals.
And then, I think we need to draw in our thirty minute statement that Jeff, and then put it.
Thirty minutes?
Oh, sure.
Wow.
I'm an owner achiever.
Wow.
Thirty-second statement, or thirty-second statement, if somebody asks us, how's your district doing? Okay, we've got that. And then he, uh, Richard suggested we put it into a triple, get it printed off, and we keep it with us to handle, uh, people when they have questions about our district, or want to go places, or, you know, to our legislators, or whatever. Okay, so now I kind of wasn't putting it off, no, we're before, it's just trying to catch up. Thank you. Okay. Um, on the, and so one of the goals is the legislature, that we try to develop a relationship with the legislators and the city officials, and kind of keep them informed. And so, right now, I guess what I'm trying to get at, what, do we want to try and incorporate all of these things in some way, and put a few people together to figure that out, and bring it to us? Or should we wait till the goal, um, you guys, you've figured it out?
I think we need to wait till they get together with the senior officials, the senior.
Okay, okay.
Senior staff.
Yeah, seniors.
I think a lot of, too, is meeting with the different employee groups, getting their input, and, after this, we'll show them, these are what we think are the three main goals that we're most to work on, see if they agree with it, or if they have other ideas.
Add them.
Yeah.
And how we, how we can do it.
Okay. So, I'm going to keep this list of ideas of how we can quantify that we accomplished this, and maybe, Tim, your wordsmithing, as you're working on this, you can kind of.
I can.
Okay, well, will you ever keep up?
I think so.
Oh, okay. All right, so, anything else?
I've got one thing. One thing, one of my roles that I haven't been doing very good at is being the chamber commerce representative, and it's kind of difficult with my work schedule, trying to get off that time, I actually take time off. But what if, if I committed to maybe hitting every other month, going to their meetings, and having someone else from the board hit the other times, giving everyone a chance? Maybe we could try to hit maybe ten or eleven months a year.
You like that idea too, as far as getting that?
I'm going to talk about lunch.
Yeah, yeah. Because I haven't been to any so far, and it's one thing I, and they're fun to go to, I've been to them before, but if, if my work schedule's kind of difficult, but I think if I could hit every other one, and then have someone maybe substitute the other ones to intervene.
What are they, ready?
It's just the Cache Chamber Commerce, they have a monthly luncheon meeting, where they have someone speaker, and they kind of network, talk about the different things, and that'd be a great place to pass out the triple brochure, and we have a table, let them pick out, but, uh, they just kind of network and talk about the different businesses and community organizations, just me.
I can help you out.
So, maybe one of those months, yeah, we can just, if you're ever available, and we'd like to go, I could probably, I'll try to hit maybe every other one, or someone else can get it.
Yes, sure.
Okay, I can help.
Is there five meetings to go, so they usually have a really good speaker, and then have a pretty good lunch, so.
Okay.
Just let the smoke in the candle.
Okay.
You know, he wants thirty-two.
What are those?
It's, uh, two, I think it is the second.
Okay, so I think we've got, we've got down to number six. Are we good to wrap up this part? Okay, okay, you're on, the art.
Oh. Uh, no, uh, we worked on to do that.
Seven thirty.
And that's, that's.
Save that?
Can we save the art, and let's go to curriculum?
Yes, and you want to save yours, the district plan, undo that next month, that Harry's meeting, along with pleasure? Is that too late?
You have to disembrace it. You said it, buddy.
I can blow it up.
Okay, all right. Okay, let's go on to curriculum and then assessment and then if we have time.
Actually, yeah, you can do that and I can review the folder and take it because we'll have a better discussion in three weeks' time.
Okay.
But I didn't want you to miss out on that one.
Well, yeah, most of the curriculum specials.
I feel a little like a late afternoon speaker at a conference. The last day. She had me follow the hills quite easily.
You just sounded like the first speaker of the first day, you'd have followed that.
Well, I, I really enjoyed Dr. Red's, uh, presentation. Sometimes those are all things I think we're aware of and we know, but you see it packaged in a different way and maybe drives it home, um, a little more than it has in the past. Good provocative thought. Many of you know, I've, I've been hired or had extended duties as the chief academic officer for the school district and it's a little bit humbling to, uh, come into this position in a district that has such a long tradition of academic success. Uh, it's, it's easy to follow, um, into a position where maybe they've struggled and have a lot to build on, but this district is a long tradition and it goes, I think, is a good tribute to the superintendent and where he's taken this district with regards to learning and teaching and curriculum. And, uh, much of what I'm going to present tonight was a request that, uh, that came out of the interviews from Kathy and Roger as they sat through there and listened to Craig expound a little bit on what his vision has been for this district. And so it's, it's building on, on some things that he's done as well. One of the ideas that, um, I have is I kind of marched forward in this new position is we do have such a strong tradition and I think probably one of the shining stars of the state in our K through three literacy program here in the Cash County School District. And that program has paved the way as we've moved up through grade levels, um, in helping our academic achievement. And I think there are a lot of principles, if you dissect what the Cash County School District has done in that program, that if we would dissect and pull out those principles and use them effectively all the way through to the 12th grade, we could have a huge impact on where this district sits, um, well into the future with regards to academics. So anyway, one of my goals is to get all of the faculty and staff in our district speaking the same language and seeing the vision of where we want to go with regards to curriculum instruction and assessment. And so this document represents, it's a draft, but it represents a kind of just a first attempt at that, that I would hope that we could publish to the faculty during our September twenty-second in-service this year. And that as we attack in-service in this district, as we attack professional development, that we're always coming back to a document like this and showing them where our professional development fits into this puzzle and where, what area we're working on. So let me explain just quickly how this works. It won't take a ton of your time, but, um, these three gears represent curriculum, instruction and assessment. And Craig speaks very eloquently about the curriculum piece. He's preached this model in our district for ten years now about articulation, coordination and alignment. And the basic idea there is that as a system, we have an intended curriculum that the state gives us, we have a top curriculum that goes on every day in our classroom, we have a tested curriculum that, uh, we do on our summative tests every year. You know, we have a reported curriculum that we report out to our parents and that curriculum alignment piece brings those four pieces together. Sometimes they're a little disparate. One of the discouraging things that happens to educators in, in the state of Utah is about every time we get everything aligned correctly, the legislators move the target. And so that, that process of aligning ourselves, uh, with the, with the standards and with assessments is, is an annoying process. The coordination means that we're, well, let me go back to the articulation. Articulation means that we're looking at the system K through 12 and we want as few overlaps and gaps as possible so that the kids are moving from kindergarten to first grade, to second grade, to third grade, they are following a sequence. Or if they're moving from secondary math one to secondary math two to secondary math three, we've, we've articulated that well enough among our staff members that students aren't repeating the same things or, or that they don't have any gaps in that construction that would cause them to, to fall behind in those areas. And the horizontal is looking across our system and saying, "Does a biology teacher at Mountain Crest teach a curriculum that looks very much like a biology teacher at Bridge Line?" And so we are coordinating our curriculum across the system so that we're leveling the playing field. Probably the most important quote on this front page is creating a level playing field for all students. Because a student shouldn't be disadvantaged by the teacher that they get. They should, and, uh, research is pretty clear that if we can create this level playing field, we can overcome ACEs and we can overcome some of these social problems, economics, economic issues that kids have by providing, providing the best construction, the best curriculum for them in those pieces, along with carrying a goal, wanting to carry a goal in that. So the, the blue gear is the, um, effective instruction practices. It's pretty clear, you know, we live in an interesting time because we probably know more about, um, educational principles than we've ever known. There's thirty, forty years of research out there on best practices in education. What's really neat is we've had several individuals, Robert Morzano, John Caddy, a couple of examples that have taken that research and distilled it down and said, "Here are some practices that if you do these in the classroom, will your effect size on achievement will grow exponentially." And so some of those principles in that effective instruction will, um, deal with that, that type of research. And then of course the assessment, Kathy, you asked the question about assessment, about formative and summative assessment. You're not familiar with those terms. Formative assessment really has two purposes. When we formatively assess in the classroom, we're trying to provide, number one, provide feedback to students on their progress so they know where they're at in their learning. And number two, we're trying to provide feedback to instruction for the teachers so the teachers can adjust instruction if the students aren't mastering the material. Summitive assessment is really looking at outcomes. And so that outcome could be at the end of a unit, it could be at the end of the year. That's what summitive assessment is intended to do is say, from this body of curriculum that the students were taught, what was their overall learning on this, this particular curriculum? Does that make sense? So our efforts as a system should be working to, and our professional development teachers to help them on all, all of these gears. If you flip over to the back, these become the tools to, to help that take place. You've all learned, uh, heard of PLCs. Richard DeForre, who just recently passed away, um, has made a lot of progress with his, uh, PLC movement. This district has used PLCs effectively, Summit Elementary, for example, has started that process very early on.
Twenty years ago.
Yeah, yeah, twenty years ago and saw huge gains and we replicated that now across the district. Probably much stronger right now in our elementary schools than we see it happening in our secondary schools. But that's an engine that we can use or a tool that we can use to impact these gears on the front.
Mountain Crest, my experience with, uh, Bob, when he was at Mountain Crest, he gave a couple of, uh, PLCs and these characteristics, um, they are really impacting the secondary schools, really really much.
And you can see that in her scores.
How they impact our schools.
Um, the response to intervention model on the top, that's a tiered model that's been used very effectively in our K through three or our elementary systems. That is the idea that you tier, that every, the kids are going to struggle to learn, it's going to happen in the classroom. And you, you have your core instruction, which all kids get, and you provide supplemental instruction for those students who don't master the material and if needed, you go to a more intensive, um, instruction. And it's a very successful model that we've used in this district for some time and ought to continue to reinforce and support in, in our schools. Technology, um, I love this quote, "Technology is a tool to facilitate learning and the educator begins at this end in mind, the technology itself should tend to disappear and not dominate." That's the place of technology in our schools, is to facilitate effective instruction, curriculum development, there's summative assessment, that's its purpose. It's not in and of itself going to affect achievement. It's only going to affect achievement if it's used effectively. And we're right in a period of time where we see more technology in our schools than we've ever seen before and we've got to frame that technology in the appropriate way and not let it drive, uh, what we do. We let effective instruction, curriculum development and assessment drive what we do and the technology's there to provide that help for us and it should disappear when everyone is doing this job. And then we can't forget, and this goes back to what Dr. Red presented on, is positive behavior support to manage and maximize learning. You have to recognize the, that all these kiddos coming into our classrooms come with different backgrounds and different life experiences and that whole idea of providing that behavior support for them, for teachers to understand the things like you presented today so they recognize the types of pieces they need to put in place to really impact, um, those kids and help them, you know, get over some of those hurdles they might have to learning as they put it along. So, so this kind of forms just a kind of a draft that summarizes, I think, well, um, the work of this district for a long time and hopefully a long time in the future where we look to be publishing. Do you have any questions on?
I'd like to just kind of try to scrape through this specific pitch. I'd like to be looking over to the top of the page together, because we do have seven hundred and fifty-five curriculum. I've struggled with that one over my career in education, having a discussion with other educators and often very difficult because of the use of term curriculum. Nobody knows what you're talking about. So it's interesting, that's, that's what, so it's interesting, it's the standards it came down from. So I'm going to tell you one that I picked up years ago and it's never left me, that is pretty simple. A curriculum is a structured series of intended learning outcomes. It's about as simple as you can get. A structured series of intended learning outcomes. So it's structured, we know it has substance, it's identified, it's a series and they are intended learning outcomes. Okay? It's about as simple a definition as you can get for it. Once you put it in the brain, pretty much never left me. Okay? That's when I hear the word curriculum, that's what I think, okay? Well, that's what I'd like you to think when you hear that word, okay? So I'm going to go back to the one little area over here because I think we have an issue that maybe we don't want to talk about, but we're going to have to talk about, maybe that's, I don't know what the term response to intervention means as a term. Those three words together don't mean anything to me and, and I've been fighting that ever since I heard it because I think it's an education phrase that has no meaning. Maybe somebody will teach me later on about how they came to it. I understand what you're saying about it, but I don't understand why you call it response to intervention. Okay? So like that out of your mind, if you're having a tough time understanding what this three words mean, too. But here's what I do with that, yeah, the tiered system is, 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 uh, everything toward the end. Tier two is where we take kids out of the general classroom setting, break them down into groups and give one to five instruction on reading, this achieves our success here. And that's not done by the teacher, it's done by the aide. So we talked about our reading, uh, expertise in this district. We have teachers and aides who are very instrumental. Okay, the other part I want you to understand is that when we had Mohammed, uh.
Anthony Mohammed.
Anthony Mohammed, I was under questioning. When he came to our district and talked about, if you're going to have, uh, intervention to improve kids' learning, it has to happen within the school. If it doesn't happen within the school, then you're never going to let the kids succeed. Okay? And some of our people heard that and they true to them and they picked up on that and, and that's a success and one of the, multiple things that need success. If, if a principal is doing PLCs and has interventions during the school day, things are happening in those schools that are different than in other schools. Scores are better, climate's better, everything's better because you're inviting every kid into the process. So we've got four high schools to go. I have two high schools, I think, that are going to have the model that went to Mountain Crest and they're going to school and stay. And we have two that are not yet sold on the idea. And I just want you to know that I, I don't want to let my retirement, knowing that I didn't, we just had that discussion, but I don't think the model is that good, has had the impact the model that Mountain Crest has had in school. I can't see anything any different with PLCs and our intervention time that's a difference between those two schools.
Describe the two different ones, yeah.
Okay. Mountain Crest went with an intervention, uh, program where they have a flex album that's wide open and scheduled where every kid has to go to some, it actually adds another, we don't even call it that because, uh, it's, and we call it flex, but it's really another class.
Yeah.
But we couldn't have ever got that past teachers if we called it another classroom. A number of classes that a teacher teaches, well, if you ever, they give five and that's where the model is, they don't want to go to state. And it doesn't matter, you can show them all the research in the world, they don't want to go to state because to them it's another crap, it's another workload. So we were fortunate that the intervention model just came, we didn't call it a classroom of flex time and we didn't have it. The appropriate, I'm just trying to do, is, is tied to a, they did research at the same time, but, but they got to a school essentially, I can't remember which school it was, but it said there was a whole bunch of benefits to having a lunch hour through a whole school and it helped with the flight. And they grabbed that piece of that model and just ran with it and had done some nice things with it and it has a, a, the academic impact. So I told Mike this, this year, that not only was there a problem with test scores, it was a problem with whether you're doing eligibility requirements for another college or business to have at the schools, specifically at the county. So I'm much, much tired of this. So Mike has given them, this is the start, this is the end, and if you can figure out how to have it well and have it work and have it be legitimate for funding and also be the things that intervention's supposed to do. And we haven't had a report back, so I'm just telling you that I know that every time this discussion's come out, we've had a lot of pushback, the teachers have said, I understand. I'm just telling you at some point, we have gotten to have that discussion. So, so I don't want to take it.
All right, so Tim, are you finished now with this?
Yeah, I'll just tell you this last document, this, this is just basically some effective school research. The, the one list on the left represents about ten years of research I was involved in at, at Utah State on what makes for an effective school. And it's all of those, those terms there, and they, they, of course, I could go and elaborate on each one of them, what the correlates were, those three or four correlates for each one of those, um, areas that are there. The ones on the right is the correlates of effective schools, which represents probably, um, twenty years of re-educational research, and it's very well documented, uh, is what, you know, impact schools as far as, or effective schools. And there's very powerful language in there as far as, you know, their focus mission, vision, that, that works all the way from the top down at the school level to what a teacher does in the classroom for each lesson. If you have a clearly defined instructional target, and the student knows the basket that they're trying to put the ball into, and, um, clearly articulate that, and then provide effective instruction to the philosophy man, you're going, you're going to be, um, trying to, I think instructional leadership is something that this district has worked very hard on, both at the ele- elementary and secondary level, is, is teaching the principals that they're not only managers in their school, but they are instructional leaders. And you can't look at too many effective schools around the country without recognizing that they start with an effective leader in that school that champions, uh, some of the principles. Climate of high expectations, opportunity to learn, time on task, or engagement, some of those are in those other principles on another document, curriculum monitoring, student progress, safety in our environment, school safety, snap on both of those. We talked about that with Dr. Redd's presentation, is that students feel love, be a place where students can help, feel safe, loved, and, you know, taken care of. I think we do a good job of that in this district, and homeschooling, so. I don't know how much we'll use that document, I just want to share some of those matches with them.
Thank you. Do I have any questions? I thought it probably was a good idea for us to all be on the same base with what's going on in the district, knowing as long as teachers have a background in their letters, I mean, I can answer.
Is that one question on the home school?
Uh-huh.
Who? Regulais Saad?
Home school?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's what I thought, because I have a girl, and she invited me to, well, she gave me an announcement for her graduation from Mount Crest. She wasn't on Mount Crest list, she's homeschooling. So how does she, you know, who says if she graduated?
We do have a, an organization.
But I don't think they do it, do they? I see them riding around town all day on the bikes, or walking the dogs, or, is her guide my school?
They, they get to graduate through, I guess, I have, because a lot of our high schools, you may have to validate to the board, their graduation, they have, they have all the information on these types of things, so they can argue.
And maybe we can ask, we can require.
Okay. So I think you know the quote. It must get something from the state. I don't know, what, it was a Mount Crest announcement, and, so I don't know. But she wasn't there for graduation, her neighbors, not the list.
There, it's really that convoluted process, but there, there, uh, you don't, you don't have to attend to Mount Crest, you know, by law, you have a graduation at Mount Crest, a good year. And, and I don't, I can't give her how much she gets that. So she might have thought she had done something to allow her to graduate, but, but, you know, there is a lot of books that you have to do, but, but they do have to come in and demonstrate, they've done all of their things, and I don't think that happens where, you know.
I just know in paradise, we have a lot of people that say, oh, we're homeschooling, and they don't do anything. It's hard to kill them.
Well, yeah, and, and that's, um, that's a longstanding issue in the state because compared to the state in the last, from, from, which I believe is the state that it's highly weighted to where the, the high schools survive, and it's, uh, if you want us to take, just the way it is, just.
Okay. Um, next up, student assessment, is that you?
Student assessment.
Included in this.
Yeah, yeah, not at all, so.
Okay, so do you, all right, and we won't have time for teacher evaluation, so let me just ask everybody while you're here, um, next Tuesday, we meet again, we'll be doing the budget, and the district land and building acquisitions, and the art collection. Do we want to do the student assessment and teacher evaluation presentations to us as well? Do you want to do that, and that, yeah, all done?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Anything anybody else wants to say?
Carol gets it, it's already.
It is. She has won an email, I'll see if she can add any more. She's got the one on the thirteen, um, come and change it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, should I just tell you her, see what she wants to say?
On vacation.
I did email her.
Yeah, you, 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 we'll probably just make the changes for her.
Okay. So I need to tell her, maybe, okay. Okay, so, Mike, are you having any particular, um, thoughts?
Not, not on the agenda, not, if I can take just a minute, I have a super technical thought about, I think this, this will go along with what Tim was saying, that companies indicators of the teacher excellence and instructional quality. We made a commitment to the public, we created this school, high school, and we maintain the quality of programs that we have. And that's, that's hard to do, but we still have those quality instructors, but they're spread out now. And, and part of what we're trying to do is, we want our high schools, our high schools to have the ability to have a quality of learning, it's a decision-making internal point, and I, I fully support that, too, high schools who make, make those kind of decisions. But, well, I think it comes to the academics, and that's why we have, now have a set start running in by for our secondary schools. And if we do that, and we come up with a common schedule, we can, we can spread quality teacher from Spidey through this whole district, or vice versa, quality teacher from Mount Crest to this whole district, via technology, until we can grow programs and teachers a lot, and we can have them again at every school, that's going to be a ways away, I think, before we do that. So, part of what we're trying to do with getting our high schools to be as close as we can to the other, we have that common schedule, that helps.
So you can talk to the flex, or flex schedule?
Well, a common, uh, they, like, common high school, you can call it a block, you can do the same thing, you block the whole same philosophy, you know, it's just a different meaning, it's the focus of what it is. But that helps a lot, when you try to share, um, quality teachers.
Sometimes we're sending different schools to school, sometimes we're sending kids from different schools. So that's really different, because that matches.
Are you, are you saying that those teachers are being exactly the same?
Well, we're a little bit that last year, but, but now we have a force, we should be there. Well, I don't know, we, we, there might be, I don't, I would certainly provide you the program, but we would have to, you know, all the way through.
But, but Tim, when Tim, like, he said, I'll work through that, and actually show, kind of show you the picture of that, of that, of that, of that, of this, um, I think what less we could do with that, because if, uh, a teacher isn't going to find the classes, or, or, you know, quality, I mean, I mean, I just, I just, both, that they have the ability to be a living parent, and he has a specific, you know, a certain needs and, and this opportunity to go through this transition, we want to try to be as close to them as possible.
Any other questions or concerns that you have, while we have a week here to answer our questions?
Sorry, uh, we were late, but I think yet we not attended the meeting, we not, we might not have a seat at the table for the committee to, to, to work on, uh, equity and quality, so I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, uh, I'll give you a lot of these, just, it was really interesting for me to try and pull together all the information that we are. Uh, it's, it's bigger and deeper than I ever dreamed. The thing goes back to, you have to remember, when students in this district were asked to put the, the guy, and with that money, we're going to have a lot of art, and art was supposed to be in the schools, so that we were trying to, uh, art students. So if you just spend a little time, the front page is a bullet, it's got behind it is, is information, and it will take us very little time to go for, uh, yeah.
Okay, until each day. Okay, so first of all, thank you to our district people for coming and sitting through this long meeting, we appreciate you being here, and we appreciate great talk you're doing in our district, and we appreciate you listening to us and, um, supporting us in the things that we make our impact for this district. And then, second of all, thanks to the school board, I had, um, a couple of people from the district office who have said, wow, you guys really up your game, and we better step it up. So I'm hoping that's meant in a good way, that they are really trying to do our jobs better, and be a support for the district, and help out however we can in promoting our, um, district, and helping our students be successful, and our employees, uh, we should appreciate and enjoy their job here in our district. So, thanks to everyone, and I will take a motion to, um, the term.
I take the motion to adjourn the school.
Okay, all of theirs, say yes?
Yes.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind, help move all of these tables back to where they go, I appreciate that.
You don't, you don't, Chad?
Okay.
Chad, you can take that, clear that.
Okay, thank you. And then, I don't know if they're just going out there, or?
I told them, clear or not.